Okay, the time is now 5:40. My apologies, we had the little technology learning curve here a few minutes ago and we got our teams up and running. So I'll go ahead and call the Finance Committee meeting to an order. Today on our agenda, we basically just have, well, we do have just one item, Resolution Number Three, which is approval of the Statement of Benefits for Lord Corporation, which is subsidiary of Parker Hanifin? Did I say that correctly? Hanifin? So now that everybody's here, I know you and I talked about a couple different ways to approach the agenda, but we have the, your presentation up to begin with. It's there, and so while it's there, let's just start with that, if you're okay. We'll start the presentation and then I'll, yeah, please approach the podium and let us know as you want us to advance a slide. We'll go through that. You gave the quick outline, I believe, of this at the first of the month meeting. So this is your, a little bit less quick version. And you have, we have about 35 minutes or so here today, so you can walk us through that and then we'll take questions as, as we have them.
Sure, sure. I, well, thank you, I guess I'll start off with thank you for having us here. We're very excited about the project and excited to be moving to the city of Lawrence. This, this first slide is just kind of giving a quick breakdown, so I'm acting as the Engineering Project Manager. I oversee a variety of projects globally in Indianapolis, Pennsylvania, as well as Germany, China, India, and Japan. But I live here in Indianapolis, up in Nora. Jason Smith is with me. He's my boss and the Global Operations Manager. He's responsible for all of those sites, but he also lives in Lawrence Township. And then our plant manager is Marco Crumasco. He didn't join us tonight, but he lives just outside of Geist and he runs the Indianapolis operations for us. We've been engaging with, with the committee and the Economic Development Committee through CFO Services, two consultants that we've paired with at the corporate level before just to kind of help guide us and navigate these waters. So Parker, Parker is a very large multinational corporation. They have five distinct operating groups, including hydraulic hoses, which is probably what they're most famous for. If you're at the gas pump, you'll probably notice the Parker brand on some hoses there. If you were in industrial assembly, they have a lot of hydraulic and pneumatic components. Trans air piping is a pretty famous one. We are part of the Engineered Materials Group, so working on performance materials. Inside of that group is Lord Corporation, which is a wholly owned subsidiary. We were acquired in 2019. Inside of Lord Corporation is the Assembly and Protection Solutions Division, and that is the division that Jason and I work in. So Parker is a very large multinational, multifaceted company. The plant here in Indianapolis, soon to be Lawrence, is focused specifically on chemical materials called thermal management compounds. So what are thermal management materials? Sean got a chance to tour our current plant earlier this week and we kind of said, well, it looks a little bit like toothpaste, but don't brush your teeth with it. So on the left, we have our gap fillers. This is probably our fastest growing product line. The gap fillers are used for battery assembly. If you've ever seen an electric vehicle's battery taken apart, it looks like a bunch of AA batteries all strung together. To connect those batteries to the cooling plate, we have created a thermal interface material called gap filler, literally filling the gap between the battery and its cooling plate, which allows it to displace heat when, when the vehicle is in operation. It allows you to, to charge faster, it allows you to travel further, and it reduces the risk of thermal runaway, which are some of the fires that you may have seen in the news. So the more of our stuff you use, the safer and better performing your, your vehicle will be. In addition to, to the gap filler material, we make a variety of thermally conductive adhesives. So once your battery pack is assembled, you still need to connect it to, to the chassis of the car. A lot of people call that the sled. But we, we make a variety of adhesive compounds, metal to plastic, metal to metal, that allow that heat to continue being conducted through the battery assembly and towards, you know, liquid cooling or, or air cooling. Then finally, we're, we're making a variety of potting and encapsulants. Those are placed over top of, you know, especially circuit board assemblies, but they can also be placed in motors. The function is the same where it's displacing the heat that's created by running the electronics, but those potting encapsulants are more of a liquid and they're made to, to fill in underneath all of those small, fine components. So where, where are thermal management materials used? The short answer is just about everywhere in an EV. Most of that volume that we are producing in Indianapolis is ending up inside the battery pack itself, but we are also have our potting materials in, you know, the, the boards inside of the vehicle, in the headlamps. The potting materials show up in the charging station because when you're in the act of charging, it generates heat, so they're, they're potting the transformers and potting the handles. We also have some, some more general structural adhesives for assembly of the car, but you know, the majority of our volume is showing up in, in that battery assembly. So we're making, we're making the glue that holds that together. We're not actually assembling the batteries. So we sell, we sell drums of material. Looks like toothpaste.
That's the only product that you're manufacturing at this site or will manufacture? Is basically the toothpaste glue?
So it's all centered around thermal management. We, Lord Corporation's strategy is, is to be very customer centric, so there's a lot of custom formulation and compounding. You know, we, we have a very strong IP that, that makes us very competitive in the market. So there's, you know, it's all centered around thermal management, but we have 376 different bulk products. By the time we wake up tomorrow, it'll be 377, but you know, all kind of in that, that adhesives kind of space. Our current site is out on 65th Street between Allisonville and Benford. We've been there since 1963. This started as a family owned operation, the same family that owned Myers Plastics. So the, the building towards the south, in the further end of that picture, was the original Myers Plastics building. And then the front was Thermoset Resins. Myers Plastics moved and Thermoset assumed ownership of the entire thing, and then Thermoset was acquired by Lord in, in 1998. Lord maintains some, some research and development facilities down in Cary, North Carolina, but the manufacture of these electronic assembly materials and now the thermal management materials has been taking place in Indianapolis since 1963. In 2019, Parker Hanifin acquired Lord Corporation and we were rolled up as a wholly owned subsidiary. Currently, we employ 61 Marion County residents. Under roof, we have just, just short of 100 people right now. So I mentioned that, you know, we're, we're a global division. These are all of the plants that we're currently interfacing with for distributing thermal management. Part of the, the strategy that you see throughout our industry is a push for localization. So the Inflation Reduction Act kind of incentivized and promoted localization of manufacture for EV vehicles here in the U.S. So Indianapolis is supplying a lot of our domestic manufacturers. We are selling, creating similar compounds in, in Germany and Asia Pacific as well because both of those countries and now India are all kind of demanding localization of production. So what we intend to make here in the U.S. is being distributed throughout the U.S. We do buy some chemical intermediates from our Sager Town plant. That's, you know, a distinct facility on its own, but you know, they're kind of integrated into our supply chain for, for some of our materials. But you know, the thermal management focus has been in Indianapolis. Just kind of building on of that, when we were leading up to, to the acquisition of the East 59th Street site, we were looking around and, and kind of evaluating our opportunities and there was a strong commitment to Indiana, a strong focus to stay here. We have some excellent operators at, at our current site, people who have been with us 20, even 30 years. Our HR manager, quality manager, and some of our engineers have been with the site over 25 years. It'll kill me for saying this, our HR manager's been with the, the site for 30 years. So we wanted to, you know, workforce retention was, was absolutely key, so we wanted to stay in Marion County. We wanted to limit the distance, limit the impact on our current workforce. And luckily, we, we found the Southwork site, which is just about 16 minutes straight east of, of our 65th Street location. Indiana itself is, you know, centrally located, crossroads of America. We, we have a lot of customers that are coming online in Tennessee and Georgia, as well as, you know, some, some notable players out on the West Coast. But being present in, in Indiana and in Indianapolis gives us quick access for, for that supply chain, incoming and outgoing raw materials. And then the, the Lawrence site specifically fit our needs for zoning. The building was, you know, very amenable to the kind of production that we're doing in that I-4 class. And then, you know, Pendleton Pike gives us quick access to the Beltway and to I-70.
So you don't need any rezoning?
We do not need to rezone and we do not believe that we will need additional utilities provided, so we're going to work with AES, increase the amperage going to that site. And then, right now, we have some sustainability initiatives that we're kicking off where we wouldn't need to pull in additional water.
Oh, nice.
Yes. Yep, so we're very, you know, especially being tied to the EV market, but just, you know, as good corporate stewards, we, we look to limit our environmental impact as much as possible. So just as some background, you know, Parker maintains eight sites throughout Indiana. The, the one to the south is in Jeffersonville, that's a filtration plant. We have plants up in the north that are doing more medical assembly, rubber compounding, hydraulic components. We are the only one for this thermal management division in, in Indiana. We do have a, a division headquarters in Cary, North Carolina, just outside of Raleigh, where our division leadership sits. But you know, the, the plant leadership, as well as some global players like myself, Jason, global supply chain, global safety, all sit here in Indianapolis where the operations hub is. So for, for future expansion, we've, we've already acquired the 59th Street site, 210,000 square feet in an I-4 neighborhood. There's going to be no additional buildings that we're adding. We, we are going to, you know, be pouring some concrete outside in the parking lot and then most of the work is taking place inside. We want to renovate the existing site to kind of add on to the offices, add on to, you know, some sustainable utilities measures, do some light beautification to the outside. Once that site is renovated, we are installing about $9 million in new processing equipment into the site. Once the $9 million in new processing is in the site, we'll begin relocating our 65th Street operations. Trying very hard to have the new process equipment up by the end of this year so that we can start production in peak summer. Once the new process equipment is in, trying by the end of next year to have everything relocated, at which point we would be selling the 65th Street site. As part of that gradual expansion, we are going to be adding, anticipating 55 net new jobs over the next six years, all above the, the wage target that we had been discussing. This is just a quick breakdown, so we're investing 47.7 million by December 2024. 13 of that was, was site acquisition and we are currently in the process of spending an additional 22 million right now as, as part of that year two spend, a lot of that being the, the processing equipment. We are in the process of signing on with a, a general contractor here in the city. I'm not sure if I can say their name or not, but you would recognize their sign from all the great work that they do downtown. And then we have our anticipated hiring strategy, years two through six. And here's a table for the requested abatement, $1 million over six years.
That's Ian?
That's, that's the slides, yes.
As we begin some questions, so I did something just a little different on this one. I set a signup sheet in the back because I know we had a lot of citizens that asked questions, so if anybody wanted to ask questions, feel free to, to sign in and, but after we've had council questions, we might jump to those in time. And Councilor Whitfield, I saw, you give a nod and?
Yes.
Councilor Chavis, if you have questions afterwards, but please go ahead and, okay.
Thank you. I have a couple, so if you could bear with me. I wrote them on each page. So I would like to ask a question in regards to the, I know you call it the toothpaste glue. So my question is, this is book product. Can you tell me, is there any spillage? If there's a spillage, how do you dispose of that? So just thinking about our environmental issue.
Yeah, we, so some of the materials fall into that DOT hazardous classification, so we work with a, another major company that is also headquartered here in Indianapolis and we dispose of that through a certified waste handling program. We are not a large quantity generator, so you know, the, the amount is, is very small. Our, our yields are generally greater than 99%, so almost nothing is, is wasted or disposed of through those waste channels, but you know, it's, it's greater than zero. We are not a large quantity waste generator.
Okay, great. So in regards to distributing the product, how do you distribute those? Be a truck?
Yes, typically, so you'll, you'll see some, we call them bread trucks. You'll see some 20-foot trucks, but most of the, the volume is moving out through, through 40-foot semis. Our material is generally sold in drums, although some is sold in pails. We have some robust pallets. The material, the toothpaste, is three times denser than water, so it's very heavy. So we have pallets that get heavily wrapped and bolted down and then those are being shipped through carriers like, like R&amp;L, 40-foot semis.
Okay, 40-foot semis.
We do do some, some, they call them rappel tainer totes as well, the 300 gallon plastic totes that you'll see.
So if I could stay on that for a little while longer, so the trucks coming in and out, the traffic, what about the traffic? Have you done a traffic study for the, that size truck coming in and out of that area?
We have. So one of the, one of the struggles for our 65th Street site is the traffic because we're, you know, 65th Street is not a, a major thoroughfare. We're currently doing around 20 trucks a day, so we have a traffic study for the current site and we estimate that in two years' time, it'll be closer to 30 trucks a day. The, the new site with Thunderbird and then the access to Pendleton, we think gives us a, a much stronger advantage. And then additionally, the Southwork site, you know, our current site only has six usable dock doors, the Southwork site is at 15. I don't think we'll be using 15 at once, but you know, we do anticipate to be up from 20 trucks a day to 30 trucks a day in, in the coming years as we continue to grow.
And if I could, last question, my last question. You talked about general contractor and the work that you're doing. Are you going to do any diversity spin and have them, as they're bringing in and doing construction, are you going to have a tier or accountability to any diversity spin?
That, that's not part of the, the current contract, but if, if you can provide some, some examples of things that similar companies have done, you know, it's something that we're willing to consider. The general contractor that we're working with is a pretty major player throughout Indianapolis, so I would imagine that they, they may have had similar inquiries. So it's, it's something we can discuss with them as we.
I would love for you to, to discuss with them. I mean, see if they're, I mean, if you're investing in the city of Lawrence, we want to make sure that the economic growth and the spin is coming back into the city, so that diversity spin is very important.
Yes.
Thank you. And I am done with my questions so far.
Thank you. Councilor Russell?
She, yes.
She asks your questions, okay? Easy enough, easy enough, all right. Councilor Chavis, if you have any questions you'd like to add?
So you may have covered this and I may have missed it, but the 55 net new jobs, is that purely a function of the larger space and the fact that you can manufacture more? Or what is that, is that's like a nearly 80% increase of your current staff?
Yeah, it, it would be about a 50% increase to our current staff, so we're, we're just under 100, so we'll call it 60%. A lot of that will be operators and material handlers, you know, and, you know, we, we did a, a study on the average wage for our operators and it's, you know, above that, that threshold target. That will be coming from the, the increased capacity and the increased demand for our products. Additionally, we would anticipate with the new process equipment that we're buying, that we would be adding on some, some maintenance technicians, controls technicians, people who are familiar with PLCs, distributed control systems for the maintenance and engineering side. We would anticipate some of those hires would be buyer planners, people who are coordinating logistics, materials purchases, and then finally adding on process engineers as we continue to grow.
Hey, Jessica.
What was the difference? I thought I saw a slide that said that there were 60.
61 Marion County residents.
Marion County, yep. So maybe a little, a little bit more color around your question. We're, we're anticipating, as many are, that, you know, this space is going to grow significantly. So, you know, part of the need for the additional space, as well as the new technology, is to, you know, prepare for that. If we're not capacitized, we'll miss the market. So some of the growth is certainly tied to, as we see the, that space growing and the growth in employment would be tied to that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, we, we employ a lot from Marion County and then, you know, a, a large portion of the workforce is just across the line in Hancock. And we have one individual driving in from Mooresville. He's committed.
So this site's basically center located for most of your employees?
Absolutely, yes. So, you know, going back to the site selection, we, we prioritized retaining the workforce very, very close to the top, so finding something that was, you know, in the center of, of that distribution of workers was key to us.
Great.
Then I have another question, Sheriff, if it's okay. So the, the tax abatement, is that fixed? In, in other words, could the numbers exceed what's being presented here for the abatement? And if so, what would drive that? And could it, could it be less? So I guess I'm, I'm asking because I'm just not familiar with the bait.
Yeah, please. Great question. Anyone that knows the answer, please come up.
Tax abatements are really relatively simple, but they're often misunderstood. So it's all based on assessed value, Lisa, Councilor. So if your assessor assesses it at a particular value, that's what determines what that tax payment comes from. So their investment is a reflection of what the anticipated assessed value is going to be and the personal property spend. So we know that the existing building, let me just kind of back through this for you to be sure everybody understands. The city or the TIF is never going to have any less taxes than it's already collecting because it's, this is only on new increment investment. So they have to buy new equipment, they have to add to their building, whatever that is, that's the increment that we're talking about tonight in, in the abatement.
That's a big point, okay.
Okay, so, so whatever taxes the cities, the schools, everybody's getting, they're going to get anyway. We're not talking about touching that. This is only on the new investment. And between Develop Indy and ourselves, we only agreed to six years, so you know, and it's a declining balance of tax abatement, as you can see. So the most important part for everybody to understand, in 2023, you're going to collect exactly the same taxes as we collected in 2022. Next year, there will be 10% of their, or more than that, it's about 15% on a six-year split, 16%, whatever that percentage is. But next year, you can see that they're going to pay more taxes and more of that money is going to come into the TIF for use for future development. So it could be that if the investment goes up, or if the appraisal goes up, that they could pay more in taxes and, but the abatement is based on the taxes today.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay, well, with that, I, we had a few citizens that had some questions and I know it's a little different than what I've done in the past, but, so I set out a signup sheet and what I may do is let the citizens come up as they, and ask you some questions, ask us some questions, and then if you don't mind, after they're done, perhaps addressing that. So we'll do all the questions together.
Okay.
So just hang tight one second. So the, the first person that signed in is Jennifer Tursey. Just a couple of minutes, answer your quest, say your name and your address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Tursey. I live at 8328 Van Took Drive in Lawrence. I just had a few questions regarding the 55 new jobs that they anticipate hiring for. The first question is, is there any special skills, training, or certification required for these jobs and will you prioritize hiring veterans?
Do you want to address that now?
Sure, well, it's on our mind, yeah. I was the first thinking everybody to ask and then you could answer, but you know what? This actually works better. So yeah, please go ahead and answer.
Yeah, so as far as skills, you know, it is dependent upon the job, so you know, our, our operators are generally coming in with, you know, just a general industrial background, so there's not like any specific certifications that we're looking for there. Where we do require certifications, like let's say if we're doing flash forward or, you know, if there is, you'll see. Yeah, we, we provide that training in-house, either by enlisting the help of, you know, a partner like Corner Industrial downtown or by using internal resources that we have throughout the company. So generally, there's not like special certifications that are required to, to get in the door. As far as the veterans, we do employ, with the amount of veterans, I can't say that there's like a specific program to prioritize it, but you know, we do value veterans. We do have a Veterans Day celebration and, you know, I, I think just that experience, you know, makes you a very valuable candidate. Generally, if you can make it there, you can make it in our company. So we employ 100 people, so I would say 70%, yeah.
Mr. Zerner, you may need to step up to the mic because I know people at home won't be able to hear you from where you're, you're speaking and it sounds like you have some good information.
I'm always told to be quiet.
You can speak up here.
Lord Corporation is working with Develop Indy. They're represented here as well. Develop Indy has an agreement where we're working through Invets to provide veteran leads to companies like Lord. So it's not them directly, but we are feeding veterans to them and others in Lawrence for workforce.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Lonell Conley. And again, state your name, please, and your address.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Lonell Conley on 11646 High Grass Drive. My concern are the emissions from the plant that will cause any problem to the homeowners and how much of the work, the local contractors are going to, to be involved? And is it going to keep the beautiful city of Lawrence skyline, skyline in order, it won't be, is there going to be an ISO with the building? Maybe is that too much to ask?
Sure, yeah. So in, in that slide deck, we, we showed what we anticipated the front of the building to look like. You know, we, we are willing to work to, to make sure that it fits the neighborhood aesthetic. We don't anticipate any modifications to the height of the building. And then as far as emissions, we, we invited Sean out to the plant earlier this week. Did you detect any?
Not at all, yeah.
Very nondescript, so we, we operate currently under what's called permit by rule, so you know, no, no appreciable emissions, nothing that you can detect from outside the building and really no appreciable generators inside. So should be, you know, as, as Sean saw earlier this week, it's, it's very hard to notice the building when, when you're walking by or driving by. But it's, you know, we intend to be, be good stewards and, you know, good neighbors. That's been our, I guess, thesis for, for years at the 65th Street site, which is very close to a neighborhood and that's what we'll continue at this site as well.
How much of the local contractors are involved in, in the work?
Like for, for the construction of the site?
Yes.
The general contractor we're engaged with is headquartered in Indiana, so I would anticipate that, you know, their workforce is a majority Hoosiers. I don't have a specific number that I can give, but you know, their company is headquartered in Indianapolis.
Okay, that'll work. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Zerner, we may put you right here in the corner.
Thank you. That'd be easier, thank you.
From the city's perspective, the art. From the city's perspective, the redevelopment commission especially, our concern is a vacant building. And if you notice, this building, just in the three or four months it was vacant, the weeds started growing up around the guardrails, up along the edges of the buildings. We hated to lose Southmark to Hancock County, but the reason we lost them is we just didn't have an industrial park for them to have a big building in. We didn't have utilities, water, sewer, what they needed to grow, so they left and went. And that left this building empty in an industrial zone. And then, it's always ripe for vandalism and paint and all those sorts of things. So to address this gentleman's question, I think we're far better off having a conscientious person in that building than having the building sit vacant.
Thank you. And then last, Mateo Daniel.
Hello, my name is Mateo Daniel. I live at 10528 Sedg Grass Drive. I have a few questions. One of them kind of mentioned earlier, along with the impact to the neighbors, because the area that you want to build in, is that going to disrupt flow from one end of the city to the next? As of right now, at least for me, that's how I get over to the side of town, especially if I'm not driving, if I'm on my bicycle. Because it's short enough, you know, I don't need to drive a mile, you know, I'll take my bicycle. So is this new building with the increased flow, is it going to disrupt the ability for people who maybe aren't driving on those main thoroughfares to be able to get from one end of the town to the other? And then, my other question, just looking for a little bit of clarification on the tax abatement and how that differs from, say, like a tax deduction? Is that something that's going to become a burden on us living in the city? You know, are we going to have to pay for this new building? It's like, so exactly, a little bit more clarification, especially for those who don't speak, you know, tax writers, so.
Sure. I'll have to link them in after the second one. Now, I'll start with the first one. So as part of our planning, we are looking to take all truck traffic off of Pendleton onto Thunderbird Drive. So you shouldn't see any additional truck traffic on 56th or 59th Street, I should say. You know, we would have employee traffic coming in there, but I wouldn't anticipate that that would disturb any flow. And especially with the railroad there, I wouldn't say that it could have very marginal impact. Typically, our shifts are, we'll see, about, yeah, our first shift, you would have 30 to 40 cars that would be coming in with that first shift. That should be less than Southwork because Southwork had a lot more manual operations, so there's a lot more people coming in. So if anything, the traffic will be down in comparison to Southwork. I can't speak to the truck traffic, but again, we are looking to take all of our heavy traffic and route it down Thunderbird and onto Pendleton Pike to minimize the disturbances to the north.
Okay. Awesome. Now, let Dan speak to you.
Great question, young man. I want to point out that Southwork Metal had far more employees than we are talking about here, and it was an existing plant, and that we're not building a new building. So we're basically repurposing the building that's already there. So you won't really have that kind of construction traffic. You're going to have construction traffic as they make improvements inside and renovations, kind of like a giant house renovation on a commercial scale. So I don't want anybody to have this knower that we're building a new plant or a new building. Secondly, the taxpayer, this is seamless to the taxpayer because this already exists in a TIF district. So the taxpayer, the citizen, is not going to see any impact to their tax bill whatsoever for this project. The only thing we're discussing is approving of this abatement because it will reduce the initial gain that comes to the TIF for us to use for other development. But we're using that, we're recommending that because it's so important to have this company occupy this building. They've been a great corporate citizen across the interstate. We see that the jobs that they bring will support housing, will support the restaurants, will support the development of the fort. There'll be gas purchases, all those things will, shopping will occur. All those things will benefit, as well as the schools should benefit by having additional people move into the community and fill additional seats in the schools. So those are the benefits we're looking for, but the taxpayer won't see one bit of difference. That answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those last two, though, gave me kind of another question. Because as an educator, I'm always thinking, will everybody work 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 or 3:30, whatever it is? And I think you and I maybe hit on this before, but for everybody else's information, is there multiple shifts? And how does that break up during the day?
Yes.
Kind of following on to that, will you have night shipping or night noise that might be present there?
So yes, we do operate multiple shifts. So right now, we're 24/5. Our first shift is significantly larger than our second and third shift, so most of the activity takes place during the day. But we have some processes where the demand is so high that they run 24 hours a day, but only five days a week, where we're taking the weekends off. So...
Do you receive or send out any shipping overnight? Or is it mostly during the day?
The receiving and shipping hours are currently 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. So there's no nighttime shipment, there should be no nighttime heavy traffic.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there any follow-on questions from my counselors, I believe?
Just, thank you. I just would like to make sure, one of the original questions that I asked was, would you be willing to do a traffic study in regards to the volume coming in and out in that area?
If you can provide some kind of guidance as to what that looks like, and I think it's something that we can work with the engineering firms to look at, we can probably share some of the internal studies that we've done.
Yeah, we can do some of the previous slides.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then, we have some items from, you know, our design documents from the firm. So if you can give guidance as to what you're looking for, we can try to meet it to the best of our ability.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. I think that answered everyone's questions. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to recommend this to the full council.
I will make a motion to recommend that we move forward to the full council, please.
I'll second it.
It was a motion to recommend to the full council, and a second. All in favor by a show of hands? All opposed? It's passed as unanimous and recommended to the full council. So thank you, everybody, for coming in. If you mind sticking around, the council meets again in about 10 minutes. The finance is adjourned.